I call this meeting to order. This is a regular meeting of the Northfield Public School Board. Today is Monday, October 8th, 2018, and the time is 7:00 PM. There were just a few personnel items in the table file.
Yes, we had a handful of increase, decreases, and changes in assignment, a leave of absence, and a couple of resignations.
Okay, thank you very much. If there's no objection, we'll add these items to the agenda as we move forward. We now have an opportunity for public comment. This is a chance for anyone residing in the Northfield Public School District to address the board. Is there anyone here who wishes to address the board? Okay, seeing no one come forward, we'll move on to announcements and recognitions. Dr. Hulman.
We have a couple. First of all, I'd like to highlight the return of Director of Community Services Erin Bailey. This is her first being back after maternity leave. And so, we are so thankful that you had the time that you had. And we're also, I'm personally very grateful that you are back. So, welcome back Erin. I also want to announce that at a recent Minnesota Department of Education grantee meeting for 21st Century Community School Learning Center Grants, we had some really exciting news. There are 32 grantees across the state that operate a total of 108 community school centers. And of course, the Greenville Park Community School is one of those. Minnesota Department of Education has developed a rating system that assesses each of the centers in reaching the grant goals and the goals of the 21st Century Community Learning School, or Community Learning Center Funding Program. It factors in things like recruitment and retention of students, outcomes seen by youth participants, the level of community partnerships, the diversity of programming, and the success of meeting the multitude of reporting our compliance items. And I am thrilled to report to you that the Department of Education has identified Greenville Park Community School as the current top center in the state. Number one. And so, party congratulations to our coordinators and to all the administration, and the school staff, and all the folks, and all the people at Greenville Park who share their classrooms that they use to teach K-5 during the day that become community school centers during the evening. If you've not been over there yet this year, I encourage you to do so. There are all sorts of things going on. Chess club, and there's a STEM robotics kind of center. Homework help, which is actually really well-attended for high school students. Some really wonderful things, and those are just a few of the kinds of things that are happening. So, actually, for anybody who's been there, it's not a shock that we're the top-ranked in the state because it's incredibly well-organized. There are all of those different kinds of opportunities available. And so, again, we are just thrilled to be ranked number one in the state in that particular area. So, I think that that is enough for the announcements this evening.
That is amazing. That is really, really good.
It's great to hear. Great work.
Do you know if the department will plan on doing some press releases?
We don't know quite yet.
Do we need some good communication around that? I mean, we will do obviously some within our community, but just statewide, will they try to do some things?
That's a great question. We have a press release, well, we have a social media release scheduled to go out later this week that we're just verifying with the department that the way we're framing it is all right. They generally, I'm not sure if they generally do that for compliance and reporting these kind of things, but we will see. I think, Erin, is this the first time they've done those rankings?
Yeah, this is actually the first time they've ever ranked. So, this is our fifth year of the grant. This is the first year they've now created kind of this rubric of how they're ranking.
Oh, okay.
So, this is the first time it's happened. It's probably more beneficial for us to be in a year when we have to apply again.
And that happens to be this year, right?
It's good to be in good standings this year.
Excellent. Well, that's really exciting, and just an incredible amount of work by so many people to make that happen, and it's just really good. Excellent. Well, on that, you know, would anyone like to follow up with anything they have? I just would like to welcome Sarah Swan McDonald's Global Studies class this evening. We have a number of high school kids in the audience. You can't see them, but working on an assignment regarding just public meeting and elected officials. And we're really happy to have you here, and you probably had other choices of what you could do. So, we're very happy you chose a school board meeting to complete your assignment. So, we welcome you, and we're really happy you're here. Okay, excellent. So, we will move on now to our item for, we have two items for discussion. The first item is a technology services update. We're always looking forward to having our Director of Technology Services, Kim Bruski, here in September to give us an overview. So, welcome, Kim.
Thank you. It's good to be here tonight. So, what I have tonight, well, it's hard to follow that community school announcement. So, I'll do my best to wow you with our technology services. What I have tonight is really just an informational update on what we've been doing with the Technology Services Department over the past, you know, six months or so, and some of the things that are on deck, which will most assuredly bring me back here. So, I will look forward to that as well. Just to start out, our technology services team has its own mission, which is in support of the Northfield Schools' mission. So, at most of our meetings, well, at all of our meetings, we double-check our own mission, which is to function as a skilled, cohesive, and reliable team who are responsive to stakeholders and provide technology services in a professional manner. And that is all in support of the learning that is going on in the mission of our schools. So, we spend a lot of time in our meetings talking about how are our tools working in the classrooms and what are the teachers and students seeing. That staff does an amazing job. They deserve more than just a few shout-outs, actually. But our current staff, and we've had a couple of changes since the last time that I've been here, but we have Nick Newtonson, he's our network manager, he's been here for quite some time. And Dwayne Johnson is the network assistant. And he also provides tech support to Longfellow and NCRSC. And we have Chris Nesset as our Student Information Systems Specialist. And so, she's our Skyward guru and data-mining expert. And she's the one that people go to when they actually wonder how many kids are sitting in our classrooms or coming through the doors. Where are they coming from? When we need data to start using another system? She's the one that gets that for us. We have Sandy Felde, who worked here previously, left for a short stint and returned, and we're very glad to have her back serving Greenville and Sibley. And then John Mowen started the very last week of school last year at the middle school in Bridgewater. He comes to us from Delano with over 30 years of school technology experience, which is really showing through as he gets going this year, and people can see. He understands what it's like to be in a school. He's out in the hallways greeting kids. And I heard a teacher comment on that just the other day, to say, "We've never had this before," where somebody is actually participating in the, you know, as kids are leaving, standing out and monitoring and saying goodbye to them, and that's excellent. And then we have Michael Mary, who was in school technology in Owatonna, and then went into a more business setting, and now is back to the schools. And he's working here at the high school. And he started right at the beginning of workshop week. So, we have had a busy start with getting a couple of our people up to speed on some of our actual systems, and they have done an exceptional job, I would say. The summer is a busy time for us, so I feel like the very busiest time for the technology team is the month leading up to the start of school and the first month of school. And these are a couple of the things that we did this summer. We changed our internet service completely. We've gotten our internet in the past from Ties. That is still an option, but we were able to go with Jaguar Communications, who also services St. Olaf, Carlton, the city of Northfield, the hospital. So, quite a robust infrastructure here in town. They also built-in infrastructure for us. We used to lease fiber from an organization called Zayo that connected the high school to other sites on our network. And that wide-area network Jaguar installed for us, and we did not pay the installation on that. We do just pay to use it, but they own it. The money saving there is significant. We went from spending about $90,000 on internet and fiber to spending about $40,000, so, per year. So, this one will have a little bubble because we overlapped some of that service for a couple of months, but really a great savings for us. And we also doubled our bandwidth, so that's great. And we upped the capacity of what can go through that local, our wide-area network. So, that's excellent. We have a new content filter and a new firewall to go along with that increased fiber capacity. The firewall that we had previous was, it was end-of-life, no longer supported. So, that puts all of us in a better place security-wise to have an updated firewall and content filter, which give us great data as well that we haven't had in the past. We did a lot of new projector installations. I think it was about a million. Actually, right around 100. It just seems like a lot when you have a small team. And the team was excellent, classroom to classroom, replacing the projectors. So, now every classroom has a really nice updated projector. We've been doing that over the past few years, and now we got the rest of them over this summer. And so, that's a really nice improvement. You can tell when you go in there, they have nice crisp images projecting onto their smart boards or their screen, and that's excellent. The middle school wiring. Middle school has been a place that has had some interesting issues of audio and video at different ends of classrooms since I've been here, since long before I was here. Just because that building is about 15 years old, and you think about it being nice and new and beautiful, but also built before we had voice amplification and before we had projection in every room. So, those things have all been added as time went on, and probably thoughtfully for the time when they were added. But as a consistent building application of all of those tools, we had to do some updates. So, each of those classrooms got updates for their projection wiring and how they connect their computers, and they are moving along swimmingly. Excellent. Apple TVs. Apple TVs are just a little black box. They're not an actual TV, but they let you connect wirelessly to the projector. We have seen a huge increase in use of Apple TVs. We installed the remaining ones that we purchased last year over the summer. So, I think we have about 150 out in classrooms, and we have people waiting to get one if they can. Update for our print tracking. Students now, when they print from their iPads, log in here. It might cause a little bit more of a delay, but it does prevent high school students from printing across our network to someplace like Bridgewater or the middle school, or, you know, vice versa. So, we're limiting print waste by that, and also able to go back by username and go, "Wait a minute, this is an outstanding level of printing, and maybe we need to rework some of our, how we monitor printing." And then we've done some AV improvements, just some simple things to classroom sound and such. Our team, like I said at the start, with our mission to support the greater mission of the district, we are always in collaboration with other departments and other projects. So, the technology department would never, ever exist on its own. We are only in service to the other things that are going on here. So, as far as curriculum goes, the socially-emotional curriculum, you know, that we took all of that content and digitized it so that teachers would be able to access it through Google Drive instead of finding a DVD or a CD and putting that in a player and making it play. They can just be connected with their computer, go through Google Drive, pull up the resources for any of the lessons. I was in, this picture is actually from today, I was at Bridgewater, and there was a teacher, a substitute teacher there, who pulled up the lesson. And I walked in just to go, "I want to see if this works." And so, she was able to play the video, and it all went along. The kids got up and started singing it. This is a second-grade classroom. And then I was just walking down the hall a little further, and I got to a third-grade classroom where they were singing the same song, but those kids were all like lined up and shouting and dancing, and they knew it. And it just said to me, "This is an example of an implementation that is working." So, we're in year two, it's still moving forward, and those kids from second to third grade show continuity in the content, and they're having fun. So, that was great. Of course, we have our literacy rollout, which you're going to hear more about from Mary Grace, so I won't speak about that. But the technology side, whatever our students or our staff can access through their iPads, through their computers, we want to make sure that it's easy for them. So, we'll work with Hope or with Mary Grace to make sure that that works out for our coaches. We find that we have an increase in the use of digital tools across the board in curriculum. So, our elementary students, our middle school students, our high school students across the board are using more and more content that they're finding online or through an app, practice apps, things like that. So, the demand for support for curriculum is going up, up, up. We've also helped with flexible spaces. So, one of our near-term priorities, if you get a chance to be at the middle school and walk through, you'll see their media center has been kind of continually updated with some good spaces. We did put in a nice presentation space there where they show their Friday movies and where I do some professional development. You can have some small meetings in that soft seating in the front of their media center. It's a nice presentation space, a nice meeting space. And then also some of the classrooms, if you get a chance to look at some of the furniture. For example, in Jan Anzdrud's classroom, a mix of tables that are two students together or just single-student tables. They are very easily moved around and reconfigured. She has space, I believe, for 40 students, and it doesn't look crowded. And she has a couple of high-top tables that kids are able to choose to use as well. More of that will be happening as we move forward. And she is able to connect from wherever she is in her room. Also, doing great with the technology aspect of being able to present well and such. Process improvement. We've talked about the PLCU Smart Goals and the Evidence and Practice forms. Those are all now on Google, and now we have that pretty much systematized, like it's working. And a couple of tweaks at the start of the year, a couple of questions to update it for this year, and it's going. And you go in and you go, "Yep, here they all are. People are going online, filling out the form. They get back their document that's all the way filled out." And those are the kinds of processes that we're helping with. The new one now, college and career readiness. Last year, we started working really closely with the middle school and the readiness rubrics that they're filling out in seventh and eighth grade. And every student does one in the fall and in the spring. Those share automatically with all of the teachers that are working with those students, so they can check in with them and they can easily find them. They're automatically titled by their name and the date that they complete them. So, we help with that process. And then here at the high school, they're using Schoology for the flex period when they have the CCR days. I got something the other day. I looked in my inbox, and I had, you know, 300 notifications that students had uploaded something about time management to Schoology because I happen to be an admin in one of those courses. I didn't really need those emails, and I figured other people maybe got them too. It's a good chance to say, "Hey, here's how you get rid of those," to all the teachers. But it said to me they're using it. They've got all the kids in the right classes. They're doing the activities, and the kids now, I mean, it's the first time that we have had across the board, people able to use tools that, they disseminate them to all the small groups of kids around the building, and they can work through them. We've talked to you a little bit about Northfield and ACT, the combination of DCSDC and the former Tech steering committee. So, we're bringing those together, really saying that the technology doesn't stand alone in any way. It's here to support the other things that are going on. We had two grant applications this fall when we met for our first meeting, and those were a seventh-grade science application from Amy Allen and Trina Meham. They would like to create some bird feeding stations, actually a new one. They have one already, and they're going to repair the old one, create a new one. They are visible from their classrooms, but they also are installing trail cameras so that they can catch movement in the winter. They'll be able to upload the video, track the data, see what species of birds they're getting and what their feeding habits are. And then they're participating in some citizen-science project work where the students are following the protocol of other scientists and contributing to projects that are going on outside of Northfield, but they can use their data to help support those life-science projects. So, pretty cool stuff. And then the ALC, we had Cheryl Matheson put in a request that was really founded in encouraging students to come, saying, "We have something for you to do that's an elective. It's optional." But what they're doing is, her grant was for some log cabin, miniature log cabins and dollhouses that students will build. And the focus is that they will have something that is enjoyable. It gets them there, and attendance would increase, and also credit completion. And then the technical reading aspect of that they're building these houses and that they're fairly complex. This is not Legos, as far as I can tell. And what they will do with the completed houses is auction them off or raffle them off, I believe, to raise money for Habitat for Humanity. So, very purposeful. Both of these projects show great relevance and interaction with the real world, and those are the things that kids will remember. So, of course, we are here to support the classroom practices, so that's our focus this year. We're not looking at a lot of new things, nothing, no sweeping changes. We have Schoology in place. We did stop paying for our kindergarten through third grade for Schoology, which we were in the past. Now, we're paying for fourth through 12th. There's a ton of features. So, I'm working on some PD to get that out to teachers and say, "Hey, check out these assessment features, and look what you can do." Lori Warner and I are working on getting some of our everyday math assessments into Schoology so that teachers could access them already put together, so that the first try, they can just see what it does without having to take really any risk. And what it can do is it can read to students, so we have a student who needs that. But it could be beneficial to everyone, and Schoology has that built in. So, if we can get those assessments that they're taking on paper into Schoology in a format where students can access them in their class and using their iPad can have it read to them, we cover quite a bit of ground in supporting our students, which is great. CSO is booming right now. CSO is a parent-communication tool, an online portfolio for students. It is pretty elementary-focused. We have purchased it for early childhood through third grade, and we have seen a huge increase in what, well, I don't know. I assume it's an increase because I don't have anything to compare to. So, I'm going to say increase. Our stats from the last week showed 1,747 parent engagements in the three elementary schools for kindergarten through third grade. So, I don't think we've had anything that has brought them in that much to see their students' classroom work. So, that's really, really awesome. It's a simple tool. Kids can upload their work and show it. They can have drawings, they can have pictures, they can have video. What you see here is like a worksheet that has skip counting in first grade, and students are recording their screen and their voice at the same time. So, they're doing their math problem, drawing their little skip counting in, record it, they post it, their parent can see it. So, their parents see, it's like, "Oh, my student's working on this today." And I already mentioned Apple TVs. My biggest hope with the Apple TV is that now, when we have a classroom that we look out upon and we say, you know, "We're working on something, and we want students to be able to share what they're finding and the things that they are creating," there's no wire. This is a simple, "Oh, let me disconnect, you take it over." And we get to move into a student-centered approach to instruction, where our students are really driving what is happening in the classroom and what the rest of the class is seeing and responding to. It's a very easy switch. More on the classroom practices. These pictures are a little bit dark. That's Robert Garcia just kind of standing there with his laptop in his hand and talking to his class today about pen pals and good examples and whatnot. And I think it's the kind of flexibility to move around and be near all of his students, and that's a feature of the Apple TV. Professional development. We've done quite a bit of it. Of course, that's one of the ongoing goals. So, Summer Learning Series was in full swing. We had a couple of days in June and a couple in August. We tailored the sessions to what we heard from staff and surveys of what they wanted to learn about. And then I've been going this year twice a month in each building, either before or after school, to just do optional sessions. So, I'll be at Greenville tomorrow morning for one of those, actually about Apple TV and how to make it work efficiently in your classroom. So, those have been going on. We're getting a handful of people every time. This is a group of teachers doing kind of a STEM activity, fun over the summer. And of course, we get things like green screen and Hope Langston completing her Iron Man. You have to have a little fun in your PD. And then upcoming, we have an office staff training in time where we're going to provide some training through Sourcewell, which is formerly Ties, on the Google tools and Microsoft tools and how they can work together because we're looking to build efficacy and efficiency in those roles where we're working more and more and more with large amounts of data, needing to do things like merging data, sifting through it, filtering, sorting, to find what we need in order to run a different program or communicate with certain people. And we need to build that skill level there. So, we'll be doing that. And then, of course, the Ties Conference will be coming up, and we'll take a group to that again. Service stats. Our team, like I said, has been outstanding. We do a ton of work with buildings and grounds. So, Jim Call, Seth, and I get to collaborate quite a bit on things like installations and just working through various projects with capital budget and so on, so forth. Lots of work with our vendors and with our software developers to troubleshoot and to figure out all of the new tools that we bring in, how can we use them well. We have completed just this school year over 600 tickets, so, busy people. All right, now we get to the nuts and bolts pieces here. Student device leases. So, this is where I get to probably come back a few times, and we'll talk through what we are going to do right now. We don't have any plans for what we will do moving forward. We're at a point where we need to start gathering information, basically. So, if you recall, we did a three-phase lease to renew our initial iPad lease. The first phase had the 910 iPad Mini 2s. We made our fourth payment in July of this year, fiscal year '19, so those we now own. So, that's excellent. The Phase 2 was the 2,650 iPad Air 1s. That is what our secondary students and some of our staff are using. We made our third payment in fiscal year '19. So, these are four-three leases. We can talk about that. There are four-year leases that you can renew at three years. That little piece that says half of it was booked early. When we purchased those devices, we overlapped with our original iPad 2 lease that ended in the summer. We took possession of those iPad Airs in January and passed them out to students, got them up and in use. We, on Val's, very, very solid financial advice, very grateful for Val. She booked half of that cost in fiscal year '18, even though the first real payment was, or I mean, in fiscal year, it would have been '16. And then '17, '18, and '19 were full payments. And so, that leaves half of a payment that we are responsible for in the next fiscal year. The 136-2 is the remaining balance there. Phase 3 was the next summer, actually, 480 iPad Mini 2s. Those are what filled in in our fourth and fifth grade. We got them to 1:1 and moved the K through 3 up to about one for every two students. We paid our third payment on that this past July, so we have $35,000 left on that lease, coming up to make the fourth one this coming summer. So, here's the fiscal year layout of that. Fiscal year '16 is the year, the last year we had our iPad 2s, so we had that full payment in there. There's that half, well, the first payment on our Phase 1 iPad Minis, the half of the payment on our iPad Airs. And then Phase 3 didn't implement until fiscal year '17. So, you can see the layout of each of those lease payments. We are currently in fiscal year '19, so that's why that one is bolded, to show where we are currently at. Those were payments that were completed in July of this year. So, remaining payments on our current devices are in fiscal year '20. Once those payments are made, we do own those devices, just like we do with Phase 1. So, my intention would be to leverage the value in those, either to continue using them in places where we can or to resell them and come up with enough, I believe that we would come up with plenty to cover the final payment. Looking at what we do to update our student devices, this is a choice that affects everyone, and so we need to get plenty of input in this one. I do have a survey that is out to staff right now. I'll touch on that in a little bit, but it is starting to gather some feedback. That will just go to a group of, a focus group that will continue to work to gather more in-depth feedback on how we should move forward. So, we will include teacher and student feedback about the needs that they have for the devices that they're using. I'm setting up some product demonstrations to view, probably Chromebooks and iPads. We'll see if that's the devices that we want to look at as the process kind of moves along. And then, the evaluation of devices and experiences, both here and in other districts. I would look to districts that have a variety of setups. So, we want to look to districts that have had successful Chromebook implementations, successful iPad implementations, iPad and laptop mixed implementations, however it might be. And I know enough people on what they're doing to go, "All right, we can find a good mix of districts who have varied experiences and kind of rate our experiences, evaluate them using a rubric that I began to develop that includes things like ease of application deployment and management opportunities, how do we get them out to students," pieces like that. So, we'll evaluate pretty deeply the experiences. We're pretty far into 1:1 devices in schools now, seven or so years. So, there's a lot of, a lot more information to look to than we've had in the past in this situation. And then that focus group, like I was saying, we will look to have, of course, representatives from all corners of the district to inform the process as we move forward. MacBook updates. So, we're in our second year of that lease for teachers. We have seen a substantial improvement in the usage, the skill, the satisfaction. Things are rolling pretty smoothly this year. So, as we walk around and look and observe in our classrooms, our teachers are up and running. I mentioned on the last slide, we have a survey out right now. That survey is the same survey that we used last year, working together with the NEA to gather feedback from our licensed staff on how the MacBooks were impacting their classroom practice. So, that is out right now. I won't go into results because it's still open. So, I will be back to share results from that survey in the future. And as we look to what's next, really, it's looking now fiscal year '20. So, we've got fiscal year '19 up and running, looking to what are we going to do moving forward? You know, we're keeping the things that we've got going. Need to do something with our student devices, looking at the input that we'll get there. AV solutions. I think sound is our biggest issue right now in classrooms, easily connecting to a really nice speaker. Flexible spaces. We have more and more demand for spaces for small groups to work together or for small presentations. We have a couple of computer labs that could be updated. The graphics lab is one of them. These two computer labs could stand to be updated. The business labs at the high school are probably a pretty high priority, actually. So, we'll look around the district and look at the equipment. the district and look at the equipment we have and what is still needed. And maybe some of it is not needed anymore for the way that we are working these days. So we will evaluate. As always, the focus is on the teaching and learning. So we want full integration of our current tools. We're not looking to go throwing in a bunch of new things. Right now, we're feeling like we're in a good spot with people feeling comfortable, having efficacy in their work, able to maneuver their equipment and to use the tools that we've got. And we would like to dig deeper into some of the features that we haven't tapped into yet. So that's the main focus. And of course, we'll look for what the next new classroom equipment might be. We always hear people talking about the latest and greatest, and it never stops, so we always have to keep looking. And that's what I've got for you tonight, so I would definitely be willing to answer questions.
Excellent presentation, as always. So board members, questions, comments? Amy?
Thank you very much for the presentation. It's impressive how on top of everything you are, so I appreciate that. So I have a question that's coming completely out of the blue.
Okay.
Okay. So as a parent of a recent graduate, who is my last child to go through the system, I'm wondering what happens to the student and the parent access to things like Skyword, you know, which has all of their test scores and their grades and everything that they might want to refer back to at some point, but I think...
Yeah, we typically mark, any students who leave the district are marked inactive in those systems in the summer. And so when school ends in June, we give it through about July and then Nate, our network manager, because that's also how we maintain who our current students are for reporting and such. Of course, student information, parents can get student information, including transcripts and test scores and things like that, from us if needed.
Right, so they'd have to come...
They would have to request that information, yeah.
So I didn't notice, maybe there was one, any sort of announcement that went out to parents that said, "Your access is going to be cut off on August 1st," or...
Yeah, I don't believe that we've sent something like that in the past, but what I'm hearing is you would have appreciated that.
Yeah, because I think I might have gone in and made sure I had copies of everything I thought I needed copies of, or whatever it was.
That would definitely be something we could do for parents.
But I don't, I think everything you do is great, so I'm hesitant to add more to it, but just another thought.
It's a good suggestion, so I'm happy to have suggestions.
Thank you.
Other questions, comments? Ellen?
I'm curious about, this is excellent, and I'm curious about how you're sort of thinking about your continuous improvement. And way back when we first started hearing about the iPads, we were looking at this SAMR model.
Yeah.
And so I'm kind of wondering what's next, because some of the examples you gave were clearly like redefinition. I was really excited to hear about the parent engagement at the elementary with the portfolio.
I'm not sure if I have any control over that. I think we might be down here.
Bruce, come on.
Good. Thanks, Bruce. Yeah, so we did start with the SAMR model, and we got a little bit stuck. We got a little bit to the point of going, "Okay, now we've gotten used to things, and now we need to change," and it became challenging. And so I think the changes have happened in a way that's been a little bit more driven by the curricular needs, driven by the conversations with teachers, driven by something that somebody hears about and goes, "Oh, I can do that." So here's the one that I just heard about this week that I think you might appreciate. I had a teacher at the high school, John Whitney, email and say, "Why is the site The Noun Project blocked?" And he was trying to use it for infographics. And I've never heard of The Noun Project, so I went and checked it out. The Noun Project is just like millions of free, simple images with a white background or no background, so that you can put them into a visual that you're creating. And he was having his students create infographics. So I asked him a couple of questions. I said, "This is really great." And he said, "Yeah, they're making amazing things." And he goes, "What's great is they put up such an amazing logical and concise argument for whatever they're trying to prove, because they're looking for graphics and putting in a few words." And they made amazing visual presentations using Can buffer right now, and he was exploring the next tool because he hit the capacity that he could use on the free version. So looking for the next way to do that. Now, my mind says, "Oh, you know what? I think we could do that in Pages on the iPad." So I go, "I'm going to try one and see what I can do." And then I'll go talk to John Whitney and say, "Hey, what do you think of this app for what you want to do moving forward?" So we've had a lot more interaction like that. It's the professional development sessions where you engage with a couple of teachers, and then almost always, I end up going back to somebody's classroom to say, "Oh yeah, we could do that here," and looking into that. Now, 21st century skills, we talk about a lot. We still do talk about what do we want our students to be doing? We want them to be having relevant experiences. We want them to be able to have communication skills that are going to serve them well moving forward. We had a teacher recently ask students, a high school teacher, ask students to email a project, and the students did not know how to send an email. And we go, "Oh, that's different," or we have more demand on our...
He knows for old people.
I know, so I'm old, is what you're saying. We have more demand on our printer here than we've seen in the past. And one of the things that I've heard from the media specialist is, "Well, people just don't have them at home anymore." And I go, "Well, why is that? You know, what's the last time that I needed to print something that I used to print?" Like, we used to print at home, but we don't anymore. And so we're changing how we communicate, how we share information and going, "What is it that our students are going to need to do well?" So email seems like still a viable skill. That's still used in the workforce, so we can teach that as we're going. I kind of envision something that I would like to roll out, and it's living in my mind right now, but it gets at where you're going, that says, "Oh, when I'm doing a project that might involve communication, what are the tools that are working in communication right now that I could instruct the communication as part of this assignment?" Or, "What are the research tools that I should talk about in terms of getting valid information, verifying my sources, and actually giving credit to my sources as well?" Because there's just so much information out there now. We don't even know where we're getting it from half the time when we're talking about it. So in a project at school, when the opportunity arises intrinsically in a project to leverage the chance to teach those foundational pieces, is where I would say I kind of see us going.
Can I add to that answer too, just from, because I stood at the podium when we introduced the SAMR model all those years ago, and I think like with any innovation, you are peering to the future with the tools that you have at the moment, and you're trying to project down the line. And, you know, I think the SAMR model was a way to quantify what we were hoping to see the technology. And I think it was the best tool that we had at the time. I still think it's reasonable.
It's a great tool.
But I think at the end of the day, if you think about really where you want technology to be, you want it to be transparent in the learning process. You want it to be looked at just as any other resource has ever been looked at. And if anyone would like to pick an hour and take a tour, it's about once a week that I have to stop in the hallway because someone's recording someone else, and I don't want to go in front of the recording. Or we happen to have our district offices right outside some of the foreign language spaces, and the reading to each other, the using the iPad to record, you know, to listen to the... I think there are more, there are still pockets of wow in other areas where there's still some room for growth. But I think as you look through it, it's, I think we've seen the, what many people who are focused on instructional change would say, "You can talk all about the rapid change that you want, but history is history. It doesn't happen like that. It happens in incremental components." That was the original approach we took with the SAMR model, if you remember, a four-year piece. It did not go as we thought, because it evolved on its own exactly like it should. And if you go through this building specifically, or you go through the middle school or the elementary school now, especially as more and more digital tools are used with our main curricular programs, I really, I really see, and I look for this, that the technology's becoming more transparent. Now, it becomes less transparent when there's a glitch, right? But most of the time, what you're seeing is that it's just an afterthought. Now, is that pervasive? No, not yet. But in some places, it is. And so to me, the goal is, do you even notice it as part of the learning process anymore? In some areas, we're getting there already, and in other areas, we have room to grow. But the things, the kinds of things that I see students producing in year six of our 1:1 versus what we saw before are so far beyond what I think we could have even imagined back when, you remember when we had the iPad Minute at board meetings, and we'd show you little things that people were trying? And as Noah would comment, Matt, Matt's the only person that can turn an iPad Minute into an iPad Five Minutes, right? Probably 10. So I think that that's the goal, is that if you think about business, if you think about seeing how people are interacting, the workplace technology is becoming more, it's just, people aren't noticing anymore because it's just the way it is. And I think that the true measurement is what are the results that we see on our curricular assessments and our students producing something in a different way. And we have been moving toward that. All I have to do is take a tour any hour of the day, and it is far different than it was even just a few years ago. Now the seniors sitting to our left over here, we're in seventh grade, I believe, when we first put our iPads in, am I right? So they don't really recall, you know, a time in their secondary where they didn't have it. And as every grade level comes through, it's getting more that that's the expectation. So we're seeing some of the first people who got the devices new transitioning out. And so I think that that's an interesting piece, as you see our incoming ninth graders who don't recall a time of being a secondary student without it. I think you continue to see how students are taking ownership of that as well. So just from my walkthroughs, that's my observations on that same topic.
I would add that our incoming ninth graders don't recall a time in their life
True.
where a touchscreen didn't exist in their home.
Mark it.
Excellent report. You guys do amazing work.
Thank you.
My question might be more for Matt, I'm thinking.
All right, I might take a stab at it.
Okay, okay, let's try this. How big a challenge remains for students who have no access to Wi-Fi at home for their learning with their iPad?
There's still a challenge there. We have gotten better and better in mitigating that challenge, I would say, in terms of knowing that we can download content onto the device itself. Google Docs allows you to work offline, so you can take your document home that you've started, work on it. When you connect to Wi-Fi again, you will be able to carry on where you left off, which is great. It will save what you've done in the time when you were offline. I would also go back to that community school report about the homework help and the amount of the secondary students leveraging that. That could be a result of not having Wi-Fi. I'm not certain on that, but the school certainly does have Wi-Fi. And so, and we also noticed that Wi-Fi is becoming more and more prevalent wherever you are, and free Wi-Fi more and more prevalent wherever you are. So it still is a challenge, I would say. It's a very small number of students, but not, that's not to say that we don't need to focus on that. It's still a challenge.
Okay, so we still keep them...
There's, yes.
In the forefront.
Definitely thought.
In planning.
And also, when you look at how we're accessing texts online now, they are, most of them, well, some of them are online, some of them are not. But they're in a PDF format or in an iBook format that lives on the device, not on the internet.
And I think the interesting piece is that I think the perception, the old term, was the digital divide. And people, many people perceive that the digital divide is based upon income. And the truth is, it is not. And in fact, the studies that we have within the district show that the digital divide in our school district, like many school districts, has nothing to do with family income. It has to do with geography. And rural broadband is a serious issue in the state, so much so you'd think Dakota County is one of the seven metro counties, right, that we look at. So you'd think, there's no problem in Dakota County. I was recently attending a Dakota County Electrical Association meeting. It's the power group. And they were having substantial conversations about how much, how substantial an issue lack of high-speed rural broadband is for their consumers. They serve mostly a rural area. And so you have seen, unfortunately, the legislature not be able to get their act together, shockingly. This is a dramatic economic issue in Minnesota, and it is, it is really fueling the greater Minnesota versus metro dilemma. And again, we've had circumstances where some of these things have been brought forward, and because the legislature cannot even collaborate as well as our kindergarten students. Did I say that out loud?
We have some pretty strong kindergarten students.
We have some strong, it's very true. But, I mean, this is something that's been talked, been talked about for years, and people cannot get the job done. And when you think about our rural areas, our rural areas for the students who live in rural, they do not, if, at best, they may have a 10-megabit or, and if they're getting a satellite connection, it's even, so the issue is that this just isn't a Northfield issue, and it is not based upon the data that we have, a socioeconomic issue. It is a geographic issue, and one that no one here can solve. The legislature can solve it by incentivizing laying fiber optics through our rural communities, much like we did during the Great Depression, just in the recovery, in terms of rural electrification. In fact, in several states, it's the rural electrical quops that are actually laying the fiber optics. It's very interesting. So I look at, frankly, I look at it in Minnesota as an equal product or equal issue as rural electrification was in the 30s. But we just cannot seem to get it done, which is very disappointing, because I think we're leaving a lot of economic development on the table in greater Minnesota. Right here in our county, Dakota County is talking about, you know, what percentage of people don't have it. Imagine what it is, you know, up north or in some other areas. So again, hopefully the legislature will get back on that rural broadband issue, border-to-border broadband issue this year.
One more piece on the digital divide. Another piece that we look at now is not just the digital divide in terms of access to devices and to service, but the digital use divide. And that, to me, is far more concerning, because that's where you get into what people are actually doing and producing and consuming on their devices. And so students who have some family support will typically have a better digital usage experience than those who don't have as much family support. And if we can look at supporting our families in that way, to understand what they can do with their devices, even if they don't have a computer, if they have a mobile phone, which most of our families do, that way we can, we can connect our parents to what their students are doing. I gave you that figure of 1,747 parent engagements on CSO. CSO gives us the opportunity to look at every single class and sort by the family connections and see those who don't have a family connection. In most of our classes, I just poked through a bunch of them today, there's two, three, four in a class that don't have a parent connected. And that is an opportunity for conferences. So I have this on my calendar to be very intentional with our teachers to say, "Can you connect these parents when they are in four conferences, if they are in front of you?" Take the opportunity on their phone to get them connected, because then they participate. And if we can get parents participating, I think that's a pretty big deal.
No?
No question, but an expression, an expression of appreciation. Thank you for your informative report. And your presentation, it's clear that your technology staff really covers a pretty wide swath of being able to provide technology to the students, to the staff, and to the parents.
They do, yeah. Thanks, Noel.
Thank you.
Other questions, comments? I had one question. I looked back in the report last year, and you, according to my notes, and maybe I was incorrect, but you were considering testing Chromebooks in ninth-grade academy?
Oh, yeah.
Did that, how...
We did not specifically put Chromebooks into the ninth-grade academy. We do have a cart of Chromebooks right around the corner here that's checkout. And we have carts of Chromebooks in our elementary schools at this point, and they've been very useful.
Oh, yeah, I remember. That's right, because we had to vacate the One Media Lab, and so then, or the computer labs, so we went with Chromebooks. So I, it just, the question prompted when we were talking about, I really love the approach you're taking to make the decision about the next step with your rubric and engaging stakeholders. It sounds good, like it's going to be a really comprehensive process, so we're really looking forward to that. When will those decisions need to be made?
We were looking toward March for a very clear decision.
Okay.
And so November would be our time to gather our, gather our group, gather our information. I'll have that preliminary survey information that has some input on what would you like to see for devices moving forward. It's not the be-all and-all of our information, of course, but that can start some conversations. And then I can take care of some of those conversations with other districts ahead of that November time. So if we can pull our group of stakeholders together and get maybe three meetings scheduled to look at data that we have about how devices are working in other districts, what people are looking for here. We'll need to get some student input that we can review and understand what students are looking for. And we'll bring in vendors to pitch their products and show us what they can do and wow us a little bit. So who doesn't like to be wowed a little bit? But that should be the group that would make a recommendation. I would bring that recommendation to Matt, and we would bring it before you all.
Okay, excellent. Yeah, it sounds like a great process.
Can you put more on it?
Yes.
So I just think board members are really aware of how we try to provide district services in as efficient of a manner as possible, because we prioritize... in as efficient of a manner as possible, because we prioritize, you know, making sure that our resources are directly in the classroom. We're very proud of the statistics that we have of how much of our budget goes directly to classroom support, our classroom instruction, and then student support. And so, all of our district offices run very lean, you know, they run very lean. And so, when Kim talked about her staff earlier, and if you do the total numbers of devices, you know, 3,740 student iPads, switching all classroom teachers from desktop computers to laptops. Now, we also have taken some, you know, computer labs away, but we've also replaced them with Chromebooks. So, while our devices are far more efficient and they're easier to maintain, you know, than they were in the old days, if you think about when I arrived here in 2009, we've added 3,740 devices, switched every desktop computer in a classroom to a laptop, and yet we've only increased our technology FTE by .5. And that was when we hired Kim, you know, to go from having a part-time tech director, which was part of my role at one time, you know, to a full-time. And so, if you think about the work that our technology staff does on a daily basis and behind the scenes, and as I always, you know, talk to Nate Knutson, our network manager, no one goes to Nate and says, hey, great job, 257 days in a row without a network interruption. It's only when something doesn't work that people are like, what, what's going on? And so, you know, these people, they, they work so hard, and they do it without anyone, you know, really coming forward and saying, wow, look at all these things that you're managing and supporting. Thanks for all of your efforts. And it's, again, it's not until something doesn't work that people notice, but that's what a good technology department is, is that they are in the background, you know, because they are supporting people, and the only time, it's like good umpire on the field. You don't notice the umpire unless there's an issue, right? And our tech staff does do a great job of making sure that they're using the resources that they have to support all the students, all the student devices, the major change that we had from desktops to laptops. And again, they've done it with an additional half FTE. Now, if you went to a business and you said, we're gonna go from zero to 3,700 devices in a period of five years, but you only get a half more person, they'd laugh you out of the room. But that's what school technology departments do. So, Kim, thank you to you and your staff, all the stuff that makes it work so that our students can connect every day and, and work in this way. And so, I just, I think that that's a great story for the community, for people to hear, that we are very efficient, we are good stewards, our people work very hard, and they work very efficiently. So, thank you to you and your staff for what you do every day, really unsung heroes in a lot of ways. So, thank you.
Thanks. Absolutely, thank you. Any final questions or comments? Thank you. Sounds like we will be seeing a lot of you over the next six months, so we'll look forward to that. We always love your presentations.
That's the half FTE.
Your passion and your energy always comes through, and so, it's just really, really good. We look forward to this report. So, thank you, Kim. Excellent. So, our next item, our next discussion tonight for report is our reading curriculum update for collaborative classroom, which we have Mary Grace Hanson, our Director of Teaching and Learning, to provide that update to us. Welcome, Mary.
Well, thank you. Thank you for allowing us the opportunity to talk about the adoption of our new literacy curriculum in the elementary grades. The adoption of the Center for Collaborative Classroom, which I will refer to as CCC from here on out, as the literacy curriculum for the elementary students is directly aligned with our district's vision statement. We will prepare every student for lifelong success in a world-class environment with a commitment to community partnerships and sustainability. Literacy is the basic building block of education. It gives students access to knowledge and the ability to communicate with the world. It is the gateway to all other skills. Literacy allows young people to pursue higher education and to get good jobs and to become full participants in our democracy. And CCC also aligns with priorities that are a part of our strategic plan, and I'll go into those in more depth here. All of the pictures that you will see in this presentation were taken within the last two weeks during literacy time in the elementary schools. So, these are quite current, and most of them are second and third grade students. One of our priorities is a robust core curriculum, and so, the adoption, obviously, of a new elementary literacy curriculum aligns quite well with that. And it also aligns with the top belief statement that the literacy team developed in February of 2016, which is, we believe our students deserve a curriculum that is aligned horizontally and vertically with a rigorous spiraling scope and sequence. And there are three components to CCC, being a reader in grades kindergarten through two, making meaning in grades kindergarten through fifth, and being a writer in grades kindergarten through fifth. The three components work together to provide a complete and comprehensive curriculum in literacy. CCC is standards-based and compatible with the Minnesota English Language Arts Standards. Being a reader concentrates on the skills necessary to decode words and then moves on to the skills of fluency and comprehension. Being a writer provides instruction and practice in various writing styles, personal narrative, fiction, expository nonfiction, functional writing, opinion writing, and poetry. Making meaning focuses on reading comprehension and thinking skills. The grade levels follow a similar pacing guide, and when visiting third grade classrooms last week, all the students were listening to and discussing a book about oceans. The literature included with CCC is authentic literature, with the exception of sets one through five in Making Meaning, which are decodable, I'm sorry, in Being a Reader, which are decodable fiction. So, are, so it's like Nan is on a mat, highlighting the short A sound. The students come together and form reading and writing communities, so there is an emphasis on social-emotional learning. They, they share their writing, and they share their opinions on what they are reading. The five core values in the social-emotional aspect of CCC are responsibility, respect, caring, fairness, and healthiness. The CCC social-emotional curriculum skills combine nicely with our second step, social-emotional curriculum, which was adopted last year, where students learn about skills for learning, empathy, emotion management, and problem solving. So, the two programs dovetail together quite nicely and provide students with the skills they need. Another priority in our strategic plan is equitable opportunities and support for all career and college paths. So, the assessments that we will use to measure where we are on the path to career and college readiness will help, will help us see where we are going and to keep our students on their chosen path. We use the SIPs Placement Assessment on Ready, Set, Go Day. And SIPs, of course, is another acronym, we love acronyms, and it stands for systematic instruction in phonemic awareness, phonics, and sight words. So, we had several consultations with, with the experts at CCC about using the SIPs Assessment in this manner on Ready, Set, Go Day. They had never done this before and were quite impressed that we were willing to try it. We were a little concerned about our technology and their technology. It worked like a charm. So, we'll look closer at the SIPs results on the next slide. CCC was very happy that we were given this opportunity to gather and analyze data by using the common assessments. The literacy coaches, Hope Langston and I met this summer to prepare assessment binders for each of the classroom teachers. So, for the first year of implementation, grades K through two will complete the set placement assessment in Being a Reader, and this is only done once in a student's entire life. So, this year, it's quite a daunting undertaking because we will be assessing every student in kindergarten through second grade. Next year, just the kindergarten students and anyone new to our district will take the placement assessment. Once we have this completed, we have a consultative phone call with CCC so we can group the students in the sets in a meaningful manner that's manageable for the classroom teacher. Second graders will also take some word study tests. Students in all grades will have individualized daily reading, another acronym for you, IDR. Yeah, and I'm probably not done with acronyms yet. The IDR assessment is done individually with a prescribed format and questions provided by the teacher. So, the teacher will read independently with a student, with each student at least once during each unit of CCC. The placement assessments are in progress now. Last Wednesday, we had our phone call for, with second grade teachers and talked about grouping them. On Wednesday of this week, we will have our phone call with CCC for first grade teachers. The kindergarten one will take place actually in person, and I'll get into that later. And Mary Tavigia is our CCC consultant, who leads us through the discussion of the results. And she's quite good with the teachers about saying, you can't possibly handle 10 groups. You, we'll have to get them four to six groups in your classroom, and she helps us group them appropriately where they will get the most benefit. This is a graph of the SIPs result, from, results from Ready, Set, Go Day. You can see that we had 145 kindergartners placed right at the beginning of letter names, which is right where they should be, because they have not had kindergarten yet. So, CCC, the people there were quite impressed with our results. The first graders that were in that first column, they said, don't worry about them, they are going to receive instructions these first few weeks of school, and they will move towards the right. Now, the wonderful thing, of course, about this graph, and we have to give credit to Hope Langston, is the teachers can hover over it and get the names of the students who are in each group. So, we can look at that and then provide them intervention if it's warranted, or if they are already receiving intervention, we will know, okay, that, that child is already getting special education or ADSS, or we can make sure that they do. So, CCC was quite pleased with our results. And then, you'll notice across the left-hand column, the beginning level is instruction at kindergarten and intervention at first grade. So, any first grader who is assessed and falls in the beginning column would need intervention. The extension level is instruction in first grade and intervention in second and third grade. The plus level is intervention in fourth and fifth grade, and then the challenge level can be used as a classroom intervention for third through fifth grade. So, and after we complete the placement assessments and the MAP results, we'll have two more data points to compare with this to make sure we have students in the right placement. The third priority in our strategic plan deals with building and fostering relationships. One of the core components of CCC is building these relationships and providing social-emotional instruction. So, the first few weeks are spent building a community of readers and writers in the classroom. It's a slower build than usual, and they tell us, teachers, you just need to have patience. It all comes together, but it will pay off if you build these communities at the beginning. And it's preparing students for independent work and the ability for them to sustain and focus on their reading and writing. One of the highlights with, in the Edina Conference we attended last year, talked about how the middle school teachers said, wow, these students can really focus on their writing, much more so than we've ever seen. So, the students practice gathering in a group, thinking and sharing with a partner, and how to demonstrate that they are showing respect and listening to the person speaking. Those are all skills that are taught. The common curriculum will lend itself to rich discussion and analysis of literacy data during PLC time. So, not only are we fostering relationships among the students and building community in the classroom, we're also doing that among the teachers at their PLC groups. And then, each school has a literacy team, and then those teams come together to form the district literacy team. So, we are also building and fostering relationships across the district, across the three elementary schools. The district team meets four times during the year, and, I believe, yes. So, they, I did include the successes that we had discussed at the first district literacy meeting about the rich literature, students are learning about authors, they were quite impressed with that. Enhanced vocabulary lessons, and vocabulary is connected to the texts that the students are reading. The multicultural focus combined with the social-emotional learning component, and it's teaching kids to work in partners and work together. The writing, the kids love the writing and the sharing. The structure is well laid out and easy for prepping for subs. It is streamlined and relaxed. Teachers are no longer having to pull from everywhere, everything works together. And they like, the teachers like the structure of the conferencing forms, the IDR, the individualized daily reading. The questions are asked to get the students to do deeper thinking. The challenges that district literacy team came up with dealt most, dealt mostly with time, trying to fit it all in, especially the first year, it's very difficult to, to get everything done when you're relying a lot on your teacher manual and technology, and both of which improve as we gain understanding and have some more professional learning opportunities. The fourth priority addressed with our CCC adoption is the recruiting and retaining a diverse staff. The top belief statement generated in February of 2016 states, we believe our most valuable resource is our highly-trained teachers who are provided ongoing professional development in order to implement current research-based practices. So, the professional development schedule for this year is quite comprehensive and will keep us quite busy. It provides for some whole group training as well as time for meeting individual needs and concerns. So, this, I've already stated that we've had the two phone calls, and we have the upcoming phone call for our kindergarten teachers. And while the CCC adoption may not lend to recruiting teachers, the ongoing professional development will aid in the retention of a diverse learning staff. Our compañeros teachers need a shout-out because not only are they learning the whole new CCC curriculum, they also are learning how to fit it together with their Spanish literacy teaching. And so, so far, they've asked again, what's going well? Well, the good literature, it's much more multicultural. The IDR time focuses and exposes students to different genres, and they can do justice to the CCC program, although other things are going to have to be sacrificed a little bit. And kids are self-monitoring and picking just right books for themselves. So, and this is the professional learning calendar for this year. So, our biggest news and the biggest implementation is on October 23rd, 24th, and 25th, Mary Tavigia will be onsite, spending a half a day with each grade level. So, she will come in and spend an hour working with teachers on how to plan lessons. She will then teach the lesson that they have planned together to an actual classroom here in Northfield, and then the teachers and Mary will have an hour to debrief what had happened. And they will do this, this fall in Making Meaning, and she will come back in February, and we will do Being a Reader and Being a Writer. So, we'll have six days with onsite professional development. We also have a lot of online classes that are available through CCC, through the Learning Hub, and they have many blogs and videos that teachers can access either individually or as part of a PLC, or as part of a school or district literacy team meeting. They're quite active on Facebook and have teachers writing in all the time with questions, and they are very prompt in answering them, so that's another very helpful source. We will have training every fall for any new teachers that are hired in the elementary school to bring them up to speed with this program, and probably as part of that, and that's still to be determined, provide refreshers for classroom teachers that would be interested in attending. So, we began this process in the winter of 2016, so it's exciting to see it come together. The teachers are very enthusiastic about it, have worked very hard, and are seeming to enjoy it and seeing some of the benefits of all of their hard work. So, thank you for your time, and I would be happy to answer any questions.
Excellent. Thank you, Mary Grace. Questions board members have. Ellen?
So, my first is just a comment of how incredibly impressive this is and just what an undertaking it was by the district and that your leadership has been just, it's just really, really nice to hear. So, thank you. I was curious about if you could talk a little bit about the professional development that led up, led up to this year and sort of reflect, I'm really excited about some of the opportunities that you talked about that are going to be happening in the future.
Sure. Well, we started last- Well, we started last, about a year ago, a little less than a year ago, we ordered all the materials, and so they arrived. And then in January of 2018, we had our first live webinar to get all the teachers signed up for the CCC Learning Hub, which is where they access all of the professional development, all of the assessments, record the assessments. Then in February, we had a day of onsite with two trainers, and we were divided into two groups, K-2 teachers and 3-5 teachers, and spent the day providing an overview of what was going to happen in the CCC curriculum, in the three components. And the day after that, a team went up to Edina to the CCC Learning Summit that was held there to take part in some breakout sessions about CCC and the assessments. And then June 11th and 12th, we had two full days with, again, two trainers divided into K-2 teachers and 3-5 teachers where they spent the whole day, well, two whole days learning about that. And then they had, the teachers were given four additional hours to use over the summer independently to take the time to read through. One of the things CCC recommends is, "Read the introduction." They said, "You know, everybody always skips the introduction to all the teacher manuals." And they were quite adamant about, "Read the introduction. It will save you a lot of time later." So they were given those four additional days. Plus, then during workshop week, we had some updates. And then again, the school site teams and the district literacy team have met. And we spent a lot of time during PLC time working on the adoption of the literacy curriculum.
But I think, Mary, if I'm correct, it's 18-plus hours?
Oh, yes. Oh, yes. Because we had, well, we had the three full days of seven hours each, so we're already at 21 hours there. And then each teacher was paid extra, four hours extra, to take the Being a Writer course and the Making Meaning course online. And they could access that at any time. That started last January and they were to be done by June and turn in their certificate to get paid for those extra hours.
Thank you for the presentation. It's really interesting, and I'm still a newbie here for another few months, so I'm trying to, I guess I still, no, there'll be another one. So I'm just trying to understand how this whole process works. And one thing I didn't quite understand is, how much time do the kids spend reading on their own and how much are they spent reading in a group or, you know, working on their own or working in a group? How does that work?
It varies a little bit by age level. One of the things that CCC tries to do is build stamina in independent reading. So you start with five minutes in kindergarten and work up to about 20 to 30 minutes, whereas in third to fifth grade, it's at least 30 minutes a day for independent daily reading. And we spend about two hours each day, 120 minutes to 150 minutes in literacy instruction. So that includes maybe a whole group lesson for writing and then some individualized writing time. It includes stations where the children work on various activities while the teacher pulls a small group. Notice I talked about the sets, 1 through 12, and that's in grades K through 2. So the teacher will pull a group of four to eight students over to the table and work at their level on the skill they need, whether it's two vowels together, or diagrams, or whatever the skill is for the day. So that happens. And then there's whole group discussion. And one of the things they try to, that they really emphasize in the program is parent share, think, pair, share, where the children spend a lot of the time talking to each other. And so the instruction in the first six weeks of school is, "How do we talk to each other? How do we stay focused on the topic?" Does that answer your question?
Yeah. No, I'm just trying to compare it to, you know, how I've known schools to work in the past and to understand how this works. So do the kids have much fluidity as to, you know, if they learn faster, they can move up the ranks to different groups or?
Yes. One of the things that we learned in our phone call last week was that your groups in May will not look like your groups in October. However, the sets 1 through 5 are very focused on basic phonetic skills. So they don't want you to, you know, rush through. The goal is not to rush through. Set 6 starts working on fluency and comprehension, and then Sets 7 through 12 really develop the deeper thinking skills.
Thank you.
Great question. Other questions coming? No?
Good report. Thank you. You make it clear that a good reading program is not a corridor, but a springboard.
Correct. It's the gateway to everything else.
I'm interested in, at the end, you talked about kids picking just right books. Is this curriculum having an effect on what's available in the media center? I mean, the books that are available for students to choose? Are they, do they have sets of graded books, or how does that work?
Well, when a student is choosing a just right book, what happens at the individual reading conference with the teacher, the teacher asks, you know, "What are you reading?" And they look at their book, and then the teacher asks them to read a portion of it out loud. And then asks the question, "Is this book too easy for you? Is this book too difficult for you? What do you think about this?" Previously, we've always had the teachers picking the just right books. This is trying to put the emphasis on the child to determine, "What is a just right book for me?" So they can go to the library and choose any book they want. And our classrooms do have extensive classroom libraries, too. And I know a lot of the kids like to get into sets and series like Junie B. Jones and Captain Underpants and, you know, all of those wonderful, and Harry Potter for the older kids.
I was wondering about, you talk about learning expository writing, it's different types of writing. In reading, too, are you like learning about, I mean, there's different vocabulary for science, or for math, or for social studies. So are you doing a sort of cross-disciplinary reading type of?
In grades 3 through 5, we are, to some extent, doing some of that, like the book about oceans in third grade was both about going to the beach with your family and then some of the things you can find at an ocean from a scientific point of view. And we're trying to incorporate more of that because as literacy, which includes reading and writing and speaking, takes more of the time during the day, there is less time to devote strictly to social studies and science. And rather than have those be discrete subjects, we're trying to integrate them into the reading.
Thanks.
Good question, Rob. Thank you. Other questions, comments?
Yeah, I think we have to just take a moment to realize it's only October 8th. You know, you're here with this, it's just really amazing. And I think the, you know, the adoption of this curriculum was huge, really the largest in the history of the district. So we, you know, we took a giant leap, and I think it just looks really, really good. And it's so fun to hear that the teachers are, you know, are embracing it and enjoying it, and it goes back to the groundwork that was laid and the processes that were put in place and the professional development. So it was all just done extremely well, so exciting to see. One question I had, well, the social-emotional aspect of it is just huge, and it ties in so beautifully, and it's just really exciting to see. Do you know if there's a current events element at all to, you know, reading about current events? Is that incorporated anywhere, or how is that?
That, we really have not seen.
Okay. I was just curious. Anyway, thank you. It's just really exciting and a great update, and we just look forward to more and more updates, and it will be interesting. I think you kind of touched on that element as we talk about such a prime time coming into conference season, where our teachers are really able to sit one-on-one and get feedback and really communicate where some parents may not even be aware of that there's been this transition, you know, this new adoption of curriculum. So being able to really relate one-on-one, that parent with that student, so it's an exciting time.
And we do have parent letters that are available in both English and Spanish that come with CCC that will go home for each unit.
Oh, excellent.
And there are eight or nine units, depending on the grade level, at each grade level.
Great. That's exciting. Yeah, I mean, I think you, the CCC was obviously a really, really good choice, so congratulations on that and everything else and the way it's come together, so.
Thank you.
I think, I've been through 24 elementary classrooms so far, you know, all during literacy time. And what's so exciting is that the consistency, where I've done this for several years, and rarely would you see something similar going on in each classroom. There was instruction happening, but it wasn't as consistent, I think, as we knew we needed to be. And going through, I'm able to see that consistency on a regular basis in terms of if you go to four different rooms, you know, they're working on very similar kinds of things, they're using some of the similar kind of visual. I'll be very clear, still, teachers still have a lot of autonomy in terms of how they deliver, but it is much closer than it's ever been, which is great. Watching the Think, Pair, Share is a thing of beauty in terms of seeing kindergartners and first graders listen to the teacher, working through a story, and then actually turn to their classmates. So I think a lot of times with a standardized reading curriculum, people feel that it's so scripted that it's, you know, almost like a call-and-response kind of thing. It's, nothing could be further from the truth. The higher-order thinking skills that students are enacting after participating in the classroom reading and then talking with each other are phenomenal. And then to Rob's question, Mary mentioned oceans. I happened to be in fourth grade at Greenville Park where they were talking about earthquakes. And so as they're talking, they're reading about earthquakes, then they're talking, then they're actually doing physical pieces. These are how plate tectonics happen. So some of that cross-curricular piece is built in naturally, if you will, but it's very impressive to see, and I couldn't be more thrilled. So thanks to Mary and the entire team for the work, but it's been excellent.
Excellent. Great comments. Thank you. Thank you, Mary Grace.
Thank you.
Okay, so that is the two, those are the two items we had for discussion and reports, so we'll move on to the approval of the consent agenda. As a reminder, there were just a few personnel items in the table file to be added to the consent agenda. Is there anything anyone would like to pull from the consent grouping? No? Do we have a motion to approve? Moved by Margaret. Is there a second? Second by Jeff. All those in favor of approving the consent grouping, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Items for individual action. We have just won this evening, which was an item for information at our previous board meeting. It is an item for information, or excuse me, item for individual action. So prior to discussion or comments, I'd like to get a motion. So is there a motion to approve the lease agreement with Farmington Gymnastics Club as presented?
Moved.
Moved by Rob. Is there a second? Second by Margaret. Okay. Time for questions and discussion. Board members have?
I'm just very disappointed in the breakdown from the Northfield Gymnastics Club because that started as a community organization for local students. And I'm just very disappointed to see this survive.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
I would just like to thank Val and Dr. Hillman for putting the contract together. And I know we were student-focused and making sure we were doing the right thing by our students, so thank you for your efforts there.
Any other questions, comments? Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Okay. We now can go on for items for information. The enrollment report we have for October. We know, Val, is this the key enrollment report that drives much of our?
Yes.
Okay, here it is.
Yep, yep. October 1 is the big day.
October 1, so here it is. So then what we say is that 3,996 students will continue to drive all of the enrollment reporting and all of that going forward.
Yep. Our compensatory funding is based on this, but it's based on the year prior, actually. So it's a year behind in the funding, but a lot of the other things, our actual funding is based on the estimated enrollment that I put in, which I do for both the state and the levy system. But this one is kind of a big driver for a few different things with child nutrition and compensatory and some other stuff.
Okay, excellent.
I think it's important to note, too, that that can, you know, that's part, when Val brings the preliminary levy, she talks about three years' worth of adjustments. So while it's a marking time, it also can be corrected over time depending upon how things actually shake out in the end. So this is one of the examples of how those adjustments that happen to the preliminary levy, it also happens at the state level with a number of other things.
Yes.
Well, I apologize with that question because I preempted your comments.
No, it's, no, not at all.
Any other comments about the enrollment report?
No, I just, I think that's a very good point, that, you know, October 1 is a watershed moment for us, but at the same time, it is something that can, you know, quote, come out in the wash, you know, over the time as those kinds of things come forward. So you certainly didn't, go ahead. I think the bottom line is, if you look at it, you know, we are up a dozen students, you know, compared to the same time last year, so our enrollment continues to increase. And again, one of the things I'm very appreciative of is, well, we've expanded the contingency FTE. If you look at the second page in terms of the class sizes, you'll see that we've been really able to create some class sizes that are very manageable, which is something that the contingency FTE has allowed us to do, which is something we've not always been able to do in the past. So we are at about the limits of what we're able to work with in terms of adjusting class size due to space issues. At this moment, we are in a relatively good circumstance in terms of the class sizes for this year. So that would be the comment that I give about that we continue to see the increase overall, total number of students. And then again, thanks to some good planning and the ability to respond using contingency FTE that this board has given us flexibility with, we've been able to address some class size issues in a way that we've not been able to in the past.
Excellent. Any questions or comments on enrollment? No?
Sorry. Different question.
Okay.
I'll wait in my turn.
Okay. So any other questions or comments on the enrollment report? Amy?
So I was looking at the Greenville Park individual classrooms, and I noticed the second grade classrooms that have wonderfully low enrollment, but I just wanted if you would speak to that because they're certainly different than the rest of the.
Sure. And that's an issue when we have a large, remember what we do is we really promote compañeros, you know, in terms of we allow 27 students into a compañeros class. And so what happens is that can change the cohort in the contemporary classroom. So if you have a grade level of about that size, which is one of our smaller grade levels in the district, and you max out on the compañeros, you are by default going to have some smaller groups in our contemporary program. That's a good thing. In addition, I think one of the things that we have continued to get better at over time is creating optimal class sizes is a multifaceted piece. It isn't just about taking the number of children that we have and dividing it out equally and saying, "Oh, that works." You know, there are some classes and some grade levels that due to the academic and social-emotional profile that that grade level has, can actually perform very well with a larger number of students. There are some other grade levels that have a smaller number of students overall, but because of the academic profile, the social-emotional profile, they actually might need to be supported even further. And so one of the questions we've been working to ask, because we know that class size is always something that comes up in all of the surveys that we do. The issue is that I think that when we look at class size from a pure numeric mathematical calculation, that is, it's just, that's too vague of a look. It's too broad of a look because every group of learners brings to the table something different. And so there are some grade levels where you can easily have larger class sizes and the students perform very well academically, they perform very well socially-emotionally. This is in general across the board. And so those are some of the kinds of differences that you see. But what you'll see is, we do tend to have some attrition out of compañeros over time, and that tends to shift, you know, to the contemporary. If you remember, a few years ago, we had one circumstance where we actually had to add a contemporary class because of some of the attrition, you know, from compañeros. And we still have very solid compañeros class sizes, but when you only have one section at each grade level at each building, that is going to impact it as if students transition back to contemporary. So not totally uncommon to see that split earlier in a student's academic career. And at that point at Greenville Park with that grade level, that is a smaller cohort overall.
Thank you. Excellent. So if there's no further questions on enrollment, our next item for discussion is our bond referendum update. Dr. Hillman?
The bond referendum update. Here we go. Well, I think probably the first piece to say is, let's just go back and review what we're really looking at with the bond referendum this fall. And so I think as we have been out, and I really want to thank board members, many board members have helped me present or, you know, helped answer questions at various meetings. And so what we always come back to folks with is that, just want to review the four key pieces because I think it's important to do it every time that we talk about it, is that, you know, we really listened, we're so grateful for the operating levy passing a year ago, and then we just didn't get bent out of shape about the bond reform not passing. We asked more questions because the voters are always right. And so we listened intently to the community after the ambitious bond fail. We heard from people three things. Let's invest in early learning and elementary facilities because we know that the payback is huge. Let's make sure that we, uh, work on taking common sense improvements in our security systems while maintaining that welcoming learning environment and of course, make it less expensive. And if you think about all the bond proposals that we have before the voters number six, checks all those boxes. So when you think about the informational campaign that we've had, uh, in the last couple of weeks, what we continue to do is continue to communicate with the public in a variety of different ways. Again, listening to people, uh, after the bond referendum last year, we had very high marks on our communication, but we also had some feedback about how we could potentially do it better. So some very physical things that you have seen, you have seen that we have invested in a little bit more signage to really draw people, to cut through all of the other noise that happens in this election and help people focus on this very important local issue. So you saw in the last week, a lot of our signage go up. You'll see that we have three pretty large banners that are out in the community in terms of there is one that is on that small piece of property that we own across the street from Greenville Park. Yes, we actually own a small plot of land across from Greenville Park on Lincoln Parkway. We have a double sided banner there. Uh, we have a double sided banner at the middle school, was, uh, taken down over the weekend. It must've been some of the wind that happened, but it's in the back of my car and the ground screw's going to put it back up tomorrow. Uh, and then, you know, out here on the corner of Jefferson and Division, again, in our property, we have another banner. You'll also have seen that we have banners at each school, again, making sure that parents are aware, we know there's a lot of competition for people to attention this election cycle. So you've seen that we have banners, we have posters, we have window stickers on the entries to most, uh, buildings, uh, so that parents are really seeing, hey, yes, we have an election. We're really trying to make sure that, um, people are informed about it. You also saw, as Julie has just pointed, our bond referendum guide was delivered to most households on Saturday. And so, uh, we think as we reflected really good timing because people are starting to pay attention. We, if you look at the bond guide, um, we had just been continuing to do what we had for years with last year's bond guide and some of the feedback we've been getting is that communication has changed our bond guides because we are teachers at heart and want to give everybody every single piece of information they could possibly think of. You know, we had some feedback that our, we'll just say that we had some feedback that our materials were a little dense. We'll say it that way. And so what you, you've seen this time is far more visuals, you know, far more, um, different segments of the bond guide that have specific pieces of information, more infographics, a very large tax impact analysis to make sure everyone knows exactly what their taxes, uh, would increase. And so I think that we've really had, uh, some really great feedback for this document so far, so pleased that that went out. Uh, we have had half of our public presentations and tours. Uh, we have two more. We have one coming up this Saturday on October 13th from 10:00 AM to 11:30 AM at Greenville Park, and then our final one is on October 29th. Those are the formal ones that the school district scheduled, double what we had last year. And then again, we continue to, uh, to speak with folks. So, uh, Chair Pritchard and I tomorrow morning at O'Dark 30 or 6:45 AM or something, uh, we are going to be at the Surtoma Club. In fact, we've, I've got the real prime time on KYMN because I moved my time from 7:20 to 6:10. So anybody who's up at 6:10 can listen live on KYMN tomorrow morning so we can get to the Surtoma Club. And then, uh, we have a number of others this week. We've got, uh, we're starting, we've got Killdall Park Point coming up. Uh, we continue to have community school dinners in which we're present at and Principal Sam Richardson just doing an excellent job exploring, you know, the bond referendum there. Uh, we are working with individual, uh, staff at each site using site teams where they're providing information at specific events, specific to their building. So, you know, you'll see that middle school conferences are this week. There's a lot of information there about, you know, for parents to make sure that they have the information that are needed. Um, so you're seeing a lot of those kinds of things happening. Uh, we have, I think even on Sunday this week, we have two presentations, you know, at a couple of different places. So, uh, we are out, we're, we probably aren't get to, going to get to the number 51 that we had last year, but we are going anywhere where people have asked, as we've already hit the Rotary Club, Chamber of Commerce, um, many of you were there for that. So again, just really getting, getting the word out and we want to emphasize people being able to come to those presentations. They're probably one of the best ways to get the information that you need because we have a brief presentation. You get to see Greenville Park and the challenges that we have instructionally at that facility and, and how it would work really well as an early childhood facility. And then people have a lot of time to really ask questions. So, uh, what we just really encourage the public to do is use all of the resources available. We've been using a mix of print, of video, of other kinds of digital, uh, kinds of services, audio through our, uh, work with KYMN. So we have been doing a number of things, uh, to make sure that the community knows that they have the information that they need to make an informed decision on November 6th.
Excellent. Any questions or comments? Ellen?
I just wanted to make, um, one clarifying comment that, so you were referring to a lot of signs, signs and that, that we also have an active group of parents that have a, um, signs that are different than the ones that the.
Yes, very good point.
That the district is doing. So if people see yard signs, those are not the district yard signs. District is not doing yard signs.
No, we are not. No. What we've simply tried to do is it's a very good clarification. There's a lot of yard signs out right now and, you know, you do see advocacy groups from time to time putting out yard signs. I've noticed those too. In fact, I've noticed them in the community, uh, quite a different places. The ones that I'm talking about are these larger banners that are on our school property that are simply with the school district's informational campaign logo, like happens to be on my button right here. And again, what we're just really trying to do is to make sure that people are drawn to the information and our hope is our mix of that visual with the print and the other pieces drive people to the website where they're able to get more information. So I appreciate that clarification because as the district, we are only providing information, we are not advocating one way or the other. But we want people to say at the end of the day, and I heard Jeff Johnson say this on KYMN last Thursday, that the school district has been providing a tremendous amount of information. Val's been taking, uh, a number of callers from people clarifying their tax impact and, you know, had a call today from a community member, she's very thrilled with the transparency in which we are offering, uh, the tax, um, the, the tax impact. And so again, wanting to make sure people have the information that they need to make an informed decision.
Excellent. Thank you. Noel?
We seldom advertise the successes that we have had, pretty low key about that as a, as a district, but I think the news of Greenville is significant and I think there's an opportunity there that we could advertise that. And I'd make a motion that the board support the funding for a banner that we placed in an appropriate place, either outside or inside or, or both.
Are you talking about what we learned before Noel about the, being number one in the state for community school pieces?
Yes, that's, that's kind of a banner. Yeah.
Well, I think what we should do there is that, you know, we do have a budget that we have every year for communications and we rarely spend all of it, right Val? That's an, an area that we normally have, uh, some leftover because we are trying to make sure that we're judicious with it. Why don't we check with the department? Because again, one of my concerns is this is the first year that the, the department has ranked the schools. If the department says that we are able to do that and we're able to show that, I think that we'd actually probably not even need a motion because when you approve the budget, you give us the authority to be able to make those kinds of decisions on your behalf. And so would it be fair as long as we're within the budget and don't need to increase that budget and the department says that it's okay, you know, for us to promote the fact that we were number one in that particular category, we would just take care of that administratively? Does that seem reasonable to me?
Yes. Great, thank you. Amy?
Along that line, I think for the general public, there might be a little confusion about what the Greenville Community School is and how it's not the actual school with, you know, but it's, it's a different program because we've just also, you know, people have seen the test results and everything like that. So they're, I don't know how to make it clear that it's a separate program, that's a wonderful program that we're getting the number one ranking for, but I just wanted to mention that that, people might be a little confused when you say Greenville Community School, that you don't actually need the elementary school.
Yeah, the programming happens to be housed there, you know, at that particular school. Erin, is there anything that you could add in terms of just thinking through, we do try to differentiate because it really is after school program. Would you might maybe make some comments and turn your microphone on, so?
So some of what we've done to differentiate and I've brought them here is we've always put out an annual report for the community school and we've mailed that specifically to, um, all families who are attending Greenville Park, all that live within a one mile radius of the school. So that might be the most kind of attuned of what's happening at the school and why there's cars there on Tuesdays and Thursday nights and things like that. Um, and then we've mailed it to families who would be coming into the school. And again, that is to kind of differentiate or help people understand what is happening after school and in the evenings at those programs. So that's our mo, um, our most public, uh, piece of material that's beyond just the, those who are at Greenville. The rest of what we do that helps really differentiate kind of what is the community school from the daytime programming happens primarily at Greenville just because that's where the grant is. And so we're not publicizing it quite as widely in the community because the grant is primarily serving Greenville Park. Does that help?
That helps, but if we're looking to, to toot our own horn a bit, I'm just thinking, is there some way that, that could be easily explained in a banner? I don't know. The community, Greenville Community School program or after school program.
In, uh, in small font, if you could write on, just, you know, I think we can, if we're to do, if the department says that we are able to do a banner, I think we can, I think we can write it in such a way that clarifies that for people.
We have reached out to the department with some language. Can we, can we explain our number one ranking this way? That, to kind of, we're asking them right now, what's the best way to publicly share that with the new information within district?
I think they should be paying for the banner, but that's a whole nother thing, so.
All right. Well, good suggestion. I think we'll just kind of decide the best way to, to approach that so that we are covering all the, the aspects of, of the announcement that we can. So thank you, Amy, for the comment and Noel. You have another?
I have a question though, still about the update on the referendum and, and that is as you go, have gone to these various events, you know, i- if you could talk about sort of like the main concerns that you've heard or not, I mean, some of the, the comments that you're getting and also, um, is there any confusion between our bond referendum and the city's, um, bonds and more referendum?
Great, so I'll take those one at a time there. Um, I think that if I were to categorize the, um, the questions that we've been getting at various presentations, I think one of the things that comes back pretty universally is, my goodness, how can you do all of that, you know, for $27, a $27 increase, you know, above the average home's taxes? And Val and I love that question because it provides us an opportunity to talk, number one, about our AA plus bond rating. Only three schools in the state have a better bond rating than we do. We love that because it helps us, you know, acquire a better interest rate, uh, makes our debt, um, more, um, attractive to potential lenders so that it's an opportunity to talk about that because it's something that is just unusual for school districts. We also get a chance to talk about how we're able to leverage our, uh, how we're able to structure the debt in such a way where we're using as Bridgewater and the middle school fall off over several years, two taxpayers' advantage, you know, to be able to continue to invest in our facilities for this very relatively minor increase to the average homeowner's taxpayer, uh, or, excuse me, property taxes. So I think that, but it's really about trying to say, hey, how can this be? You know, it was, it was so much more last year, how can it be so much less? Of course, there's a variety of reasons. The fact that the bond is, you know, $60 million less, $68 million than what, less than what it was last year, plus the fact that we're able to employ this very commonly used financial strategy, uh, to be able to leverage our existing debt to, to the advantage of taxpayers long term. So that's, I think, tax impact is really a place for us to talk through. We read people's body language when they start to glisten over, that's when we, you know, start, slow it down. Um, I think the second piece we hear about is so tell me, you know, what the academic and social emotional impacts are. Uh, we've had a number of people talking about that. Principal Sam Richardson, he's giving the tour, while on the tour, he's able to really articulate the kinds of things that we can do and the kinds of things that we can't do in the current space. And I think people have been really satisfied with those responses and our focus on proficiency in reading by the end of third grade. That's one of the, the measurements that we're looking at, that we know that the new space can change because of some of the things that you heard Mary Grace talk about, be some of the, some of the things you heard Kim Bruski talk about in terms of the variety of learning spaces that are needed. So I think that that's another piece. And then there's just a lot of general questions in terms of, so when you say it's an early childhood center, you know, people, um, they want to know more because they may have had kids in early childhood program and, but they're really just wanting, oh, what is early childhood program? What are those programs? And we talk about the four different programs that would, you know, consolidate under one roof that are currently in a couple of areas. Um, we talk a lot with people about how, um, how supportive we think that the early childhood center could be for young families with all the research that we know of how important a strong start is and how we can help, um, especially with wraparound childcare and some of those other, other services, really make this something just a little bit easier, especially for lower income families who can access the scholarships and things like that. And so I think that that's the flavor of what we've heard, but board members who've been attending with me, please feel free to fill any gaps that I have missed.
Um, I think, I think you've covered, um, them really well. I think that, um, you know, we have had some community members ask about the high school and where we might address that. Um, so we, you know, we respond to that and I think, um, our community is always surprised that we're at a point where we're paying off Bridgewater and by 2024, the middle school will be paid off. And I just think it's a great testament to, you know, you invest in buildings and then you pay them off and you think, but that's still a really new building. So, you know, our investments are so long reaching because they realize that that building is going to be there for many, many more years and everyone still thinks of it as the new building. So I think people really are encouraged by, um, by knowing that the investments we made are now, um, paying off to where, you know, we're, we're, you know, don't, we're not taking on significant more debt because we are, um, seeing retirement of, of our significant debt with Bridgewater and the middle school. Um, I think they're very appreciative of the, the tax impact and they understand that. Um, and I think that, um, they really feel, um, very positive that we're going to use Killdall for district offices. They, I think the repurposing of that building is really resonating with people and they appreciate that and they right away are able to see that those would be good offices, um, you know, and then I think they also like that there's a stewardship aspect of it in that we are, um, putting all early childhood under one roof that we're able to vacate the NCRC. And I think one point we always try to make too is that our, um, with the school district vacating the NCRC, we are not leaving the city more or less in alert that we know there's other people that will take over that space. So, um, you know, we, we, um, are making that decision, but that will, um, you know, that space will likely get utilized very quickly by other organizations that want to go into that space. So I think people feel good about that.
We hear there are people lining up for it, right?
Yes, yes. And then the other thing that's really interesting too that we've heard a lot is, um, concern about green space and particularly out of the Greenville residents. Well, I drive by there and they're always using that green space. You can't take that green space and put the new school there. And we say, no, 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 we're recapturing green space. Um, in fact, I was at the, um, senior center this morning visiting with people and, um, we, great, um, they loved the bond referendum. Someone came up to me and said, you know, I had to read it, but I really didn't have to read it because I could just look at it and know what was going on. So, you know, it was just really good, positive comments. But from those conversations this morning, we've heard others around the green space and that we right away say, no, we have a plan to recapture some green space. So, um, so it's really interesting that we have community members who aren't connected to the school with students, um, you know, their students have gone through schools, um, many years before, but that they recognize when they go by there, the number of things happening at Greenville. And one of them was, we see a lot of, of activity with the green space and we want to see that maintained. So we have a, a real, um, sort of, uh, sense of responsibility to the, to their community and to their neighborhood saying, no, we have to protect that for, for the, to the no, we have to protect that for, for the, to the people that we see use that green space. They're always happy that we can say, oh, no, no, we are very aware of that and we are going to protect that. So Ellen, would other board members that have been at some of the presentations have comments? Those are the ones that probably come to mind as the most common.
I just agree though, there's a lot of excitement, so.
And I think it's also, you know, I think the green space, articulating the green space is another example of how we listened. Because while we had a plan, you know, to make sure that that green space stayed where, or at least we replicated it, it wasn't something we necessarily had on our drawings last year. Excuse me, and we're able to very clearly describe to people what the plan is in terms of moving that lacrosse soccer field to the other side of the building, kind of where the baseball field is now and then relocating this, you know, the little league baseball field size to where some concrete is now. So I think that's just another example of listening. I think going back to what you said about the debt coming off, when we talk about that, that the debt is committed, it's also a great opportunity to talk about our refunding and the bond refunding that we've had that, you know, we have paid $5.6 million less than what the board at that time was telling the taxpayers they would pay because, you know, we've been very judicious about making sure we take advantage of the changes in interest rates and things like that. Just like people refinancing their house, you know, we've been able to save people a lot of money. And that doesn't come to the school district, that comes to the, right to the tax base. So that's been another great opportunity when we talk about debt coming off. Did I get your questions?
The second question was, was, have you heard any confusion about the different?
You know, I want to say, in my conversations, I have not had confusion between the two in terms of, I think what I've heard from people is that they understand that there's a city issue and there's a school issue. However, I'm also talking with people who are coming to things where they're coming to hear about. So I can't say definitively, is there not some concern in the community or misunderstanding? Or, or maybe not, misunderstanding might not be the right approach, but more of just coming to understand what these issues are. And so is it possible that that is there? I think probably so for people, once they start to pay attention and they're looking at what they're going to vote on on November 6th. But when I have been talking with people, again, most of the time, people are choosing to come to this, so there's some clear understanding. So I don't think I'm a great barometer for that in terms of in the community. I think that others may have, you know, more of a pulse on that. I, what I'm seeing is people saying, oh yes, we've got these two different pieces, but they are also generally coming as at least beginning informed voters. And I don't know if anybody else is hearing anything about that.
Noel.
I've talked to a lot of people I've made speed in my work in the businesses. And I haven't talked to many people that see it as, as competition, but all, mostly in support of the youth of Northville, the youth of the district. And it's usually in a positive way. They understand it's going to be a little, a little more spending than they may expect, but they also recognize it's for the youth of the community and they use, and so I think I'll.
Well, I think the key thing is that, you know, we have started, you know, we have the, of course, the required sample ballots posted as we check off, Anita and I check off our list of all the things that we're required to do. You know, and one of the pieces that is very clear on the ballot that one is a city issue and one is a school issue. We've actually started to post some sample ballots in other school buildings. Actually, in one case, we piloted just posting something with encouraging people to flip the ballot over because in some of our 24 precincts, the school question is on the back. It depends upon the precinct, it depends upon, you know, what other local issues they have there. So trying to make sure that people know where the school issue is. You know, we want to make sure that people know if they go into the voting booth and, well, where's the school? That there are two sides to the ballot and people need to flip it over. Now, we know election judges will explain that to them at the polling place as well. But again, we're educators, so anytime we can preteach a skill before people get there, we're always going to do it to the best of our abilities. So I think that we were trying to make sure that people understand that they are not, while, while they both have outcomes that impact the community, you know, they are brought forward by different entities. And we've done a number of concurrent presentations and we have a few more where the city and the school district are presenting at the same meeting. And so that's another opportunity for us to really clarify that, you know, one is a school district issue and one is a city issue.
On the sample ballot for my area, there's the city referendum. And then right underneath of it is the school board election.
Correct.
And so I think that juxtaposition is a little confusing that's on the front page. And then you have to flip it to the back page to find the school bond referendum, so.
It's scary that I could probably tell you which polling place that you go to, but I'm not going to do that because that might, I mean, because we have reviewed every single precinct's, you know, ballot. And you're, you're exactly right, there's a couple of precincts where it is the city questions and then the school board election is on the front and you have to flip it to the back. And in some cases, everything's on the front and other cases, you got to flip it for both the school board and the, so that's one of the pieces that we want people to make sure that they have a chance to take a look at the sample ballot before they go to the polls so they know what to expect. And again, they, the election judges will help them with that. But we think it's key that we're trying to help promote it. We've got some cute little things that say flip the ballot. And my thought of a, my suggestion of a music video was probably wisely shouted down. But we'll leave it at that for now. We just want to keep engaging people in multiple modalities.
If you do make that music video, I will find a way of posting it.
I've been, I've been banned from doing that, so.
Okay, excellent. So obviously, thank you for all of your efforts. Thank you Anita for all of the work. There's so much behind the scenes things that have to happen to get this in people's mailboxes and all the other ways. And I think, you know, what we really can say, and I think what we're demonstrating is we really took to heart that people wanted to be informed and we really reached out to, you know, in ways we haven't done before. Really, we, again, that we want people to be informed so when they go to the polls, you know, they're making informed decisions, so.
I think it's a great example of our commitment to continuous improvement.
Yes, yes, excellent. So we're 29 days away from the election countdown starting to begin. Okay, so we have one more item for information, which is the school safety grants update.
Yeah, it's a really short update because we got nothing.
Your name was not picked out of that huge bucket.
Pardon me? Three times.
Oh, interesting.
And they got a little half a million dollar per couple sites. Great for them, you know, great for them. So there were more than 10 times the number of requests than funding available. So they had $25 million to fund and they had what, about $256 million or something like that? And so they, they actually awarded grants to 123 buildings in 90 school districts. And so you do, it's, it's interesting because as our understanding is, it was the luck of the draw. And so, you know, what you saw is some school districts, you know, some of the very large school districts that got nothing. You know, and then some small, you know, Goodhue, a school district to our south, and it's good for them. They got like $460,000 or $470,000, which a Goodhue school goes a long way. You know, I mean, it's really good for them. And then again, we are so happy for our Rice County partners in Fairville. You know, they got three, they got three grants, one for their high school and two for their own. And they were in the $400,000 range, at least a couple of them were. So that's great, you know, for our Rice County neighbors because, you know, again, we, we had put in applications, roughly $250,000 in that neighborhood each, one for the high school here at Orfield High School and one at Greenville Park. And we just weren't selected. But the bottom line is that what we hope the legislature learned out of this is that people are serious about this and that they can't do it with the long term, well, you couldn't. Most of the time, you can't use long term facilities maintenance. There are some things you can do to increase security, but not like, very limited. And so what we're really hoping is when the new legislature convenes is that they take this data to heart and saying that, oh my goodness, these people really do, you know, not only want this money, but they need this money. And so I think it's important to note that we hope that this is step one.
Excellent. Well, congratulations to.
And just thanks to Val and Jim calls that they really did all of the work on the application process. And so we're disappointed that their efforts went without being funded. But at the same time, we also now know that these projects, we will put on our tenure plan. And we will work and we won't be able to do them at one time like we would have been able to had we had done the grant. These are things that we had in mind and we will keep chugging along because I think it's important for the community to know that it's not like we're, you know, making up these things for a grant. These are things that are coming right off of our tenure plan. We'll keep going after it, we just aren't going to be able to do it all at the same time like we would have been able to do it with the grant.
Excellent. Thanks for that update. Okay, so that is the last of item for information. So just to review our future meetings, Monday, October 22nd. And then just to make note, we would meet in November, on Tuesday, November 13th. That Monday is Veterans Day. And then again, on Monday, November 26th. So we actually only have one more school board meeting prior to the election.
That's correct.
So all of those meetings, again, 7:00 p.m. in the high school media center. So with that, I ask for a motion to adjourn by Noel. Is there a second by Amy? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.